Welcome to today's meeting of Democrats of Greater Tucson. My name is Larry Bodine and I'm the president of Democrats of Greater Tucson. And our speaker today is Laine Santa Cruz.
Larry can't keep me away from this microphone. I always like to talk to y'all to remind you to renew your dues. Remember it's only $20 and this is the place to be. This is where all the democratic action is. So don't forget, go to our the dgt.org on the web and click on where it says join now. And then ActBlue will pick up the dues. So that works pretty well.
Sandy, why don't we turn to you for a second? Fill us in on who our speakers are coming up.
Following Laine is Anne Chanick T., who is the deputy director of housing and community affairs for the city of Tucson. Following her will be Crystal Randall, who is one of our constables. And following that on the 22nd will be Billy Kovak, who is the outreach director for Anne for Patrick. So we have some exciting people coming on.
Go ahead, Lucy.
Thank you, Larry. I just want to make an announcement about the Tancaverdi Democrats. We are going to be hosting District One Supervisor Rex Scott on Saturday, March 13th at 10 o'clock. He's going to talk about what's up, what county's up to, and give us just the update on what's happening with redistricting, which isn't much because not much is happening. But I just wanted to share that announcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Laine Santa Cruz has represented the west side, south side, and downtown of Tucson in Ward One since 2019. She is a second generation Tucsonan, born and raised on the south side. As a council member, Laine's mission is to serve as a bridge between the working families and City Hall. She has a PhD in teaching, learning, and sociocultural studies from the University of Arizona. Laine continues to teach courses at the U of A's Department of Mexican-American Studies and College of Education. And before running, before running for office, Laine worked as a council aide for Ward One and spent more than a decade working on issues related to sexual gender violence, food justice, migrant rights, do-it-yourself bicycle mechanics, and ethnic studies. And Laine is also a mom of four children ages three to 13. And with that, Laine, please unmute yourself and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Larry, for that introduction. All right, so a year in, we've been able to finally land on our mission statement for how we're approaching the work in office. I know that I got, I had the opportunity to speak to many of you during the campaign a little, maybe almost a year and a half ago at this point. And so it's taken a while to really get our footing. But just to kind of read this out loud for y'all. And our mission statement is that, you know, myself as a council member in the Ward One staff, advocate for policies that expand community access to the programs and services of City Hall and provide for greater economic affordability for Tucsonans in the west side, southwest, and downtown area. We're rooted in principles of social and economic justice. Our governance is directly seeks to engage and consult with marginalized members of the community. Our Ward One staff helps design community engagement and constituency services that nurture dialogue, understanding, and create conditions for community growth and transformation. And I'm happy to say that right before the pandemic, we had our open house in late February of last year. We were able to restore the office. It's an old firehouse station that was decommissioned in the, around the 60s and then refurbished as a council office in the late 80s. And so it has a lot of historic charm. And so we were happy to be able to do a lot of the restoration work and invite the community to come, to come see it. We had like a block party, so we closed down the street and we had tables and music and, and food. And we really had a great time. And then two weeks later, you know, the pandemic hit. We were, you know, like everybody else, you know, pretty devastated with having to pivot in how we did business after the pandemic. All right, so the way that we have been kind of like the pillars of the work and how we do work at the Ward One office, I'm not sure. I know y'all have had some of the other city elected officials come talk. But the way that I think about it is that first, you know, part of what we do is provide constituent services. And that's what we, what we framed as a Ward One help desk. So whether that is the emails, the calls, the walk-ins, having a resource binder for community resources and how to connect folks to, to services or people that can help meet the, you know, the varied needs that they come to our office with. And then also kind of creating a database system so that we're making sure that we're following up with a lot of these requests and points of communication. The second piece of our work is providing neighborhood association support. So whether they're active neighborhood associations, we have 30 active neighborhood associations and we have 13 that are inactive. And then we have a lot of, you know, Barrios, other neighborhoods that aren't, have never been organized, that we also respond to calls for, for support. And this also entails, you know, going to neighborhood association meetings, helping them identify funding streams for speed bumps or lighting or traffic issues. I mean, it's, it can be, you know, something as, as basic as like even putting up stop signs all the way to bigger neighborhood plans of how folks want to see growth and development in their, in their area. So we help facilitate a lot of that. And then the other piece of our work, you know, is, is the policy side for the city of Tucson. So whether we're talking about rates for your utility bills, like our response to the pandemic, addressing issues. Like some of the first things I had to deal with in office around this time of year after the rodeo parade, we got a lot of calls around the Confederate flag being flown at the parade and how would we allow that? So I'm trying to kind of track, you know, what, what is our role, the city role in that? And so the city gives funding to these types of parade, whether financial or in kind. And we went ahead to the Institute on Ordinance that we wouldn't give any in-kind or financial support to any organizations that had any discriminatory practices. And we listed out like flying the Confederate flag. So that, you know, just an example. And then even to today, you know, the, the policy pieces, you know, Larry and I can talk a little bit more about that right now. But one of the things that I've been most excited about that during, you know, the pandemic, really being able to push the city manager and staff to make public transit free. And that's in place through the end of June. And would love ideas or dialogue on how we can continue to, to support keeping public transit free in the city of Tucson. And then finally, you know, the other piece of course is the office management and the staff development so that we can show up and, and do the work. And, and it's internal training for us as staff and coming up with fellowship opportunities for staff to, to continuing to skill up and think about the policies happening in other cities. Or even networking with, with other city officials to not try to reinvent the wheel, but really see what's worked in other places that, that we can bring here. So those are like the, you know, the four pillars that we've identified during our first year in office. All right, so to talk a little bit about, you know, what's gone well during, or what went well, you know, during 2020 and reflecting back, that I think we were pretty good at making things or processes that weren't working a little better. A lot of it because we really had a pivot to our response to the pandemic. A lot of the, you know, the aspirations and objectives that we had for 2020 didn't quite come into fruition. But we knew that we could use, you know, like this moment of crises, just the ways that, you know, other interest groups will use it to really institute like a new normal. And usually that's not at the, for the benefit of people, especially of working people, that we could do the same, that we could set up a new normal during our response to the pandemic. So that included creating a strategic plan for how the city used their tax dollars. It was important, what we've heard, you know, especially I heard a lot from our small businesses, our legacy owned businesses, our small businesses owned by, by people of color, that they were being left out of any, any of the PPE funds that were becoming available, that they were making it really challenging, that the applications were like 20-page applications, asking for everybody's like resume that worked. You know, there are a lot of our small businesses, you know, had employees that have worked there forever. You don't necessarily have that kind of professional, you know, you know, technical paperwork. And so we were really challenged to make sure that like our response to like small businesses and supporting them, that it would be as accessible as possible. And with that, you know, limited information, just what we needed to report, but nothing, nothing extra. We were also able to make sure that we were supporting the elders in our community. We knew right away that, you know, there was programs for food assistance, but then like the delivery fees for food, they were being asked to pay the bill for that. So we were able to, you know, like work with the PMA Council on Aging and talk about the gaps in, in service and that we could, you know, be able to fill that gap. We made sure, you know, that a good percentage of our funds went to rental assistance, a lot of it to keep, you know, testing free for our community and having testing sites that were accessible throughout the city. We invested in childcare. We invested in families experiencing domestic violence during this time. Making sure that our, our gig workers who were left out of stimulus funds or unemployment funds were able to get assistance as well. And then a lot of our mutual and food support, investing money into that. So I'm, you know, really proud of that work and the relationships that we, we push for the city bureaucracy to have with other agencies in our community that they don't typically work with. And then finally, as we were figuring all of this out, you know, I had folks who work with our immigrant community here in Tucson, ask how we were gonna, how we're gonna rise to the challenge of, of meeting the needs of our immigrant families as well? Because again, they were left out of any kind of relief from, from the federal government and the state. So we were able to connect, you know, with donors at the national level to help us raise $1.2 million specific, specific for immigrant families to make sure that we were able to give them cash assistance and know that the majority of that fund for them went to pay rent, went for food and, and medical expenses. So I'm, you know, just feel really, really proud of that work and that a lot of that happened because, you know, because of community, community organizations, people on the ground really mobilizing around that money. And then the other piece, you know, that we were able to do as I was asking about like the auditing and accountability to how we spent that money, you know, I asked for an equity, an equity audit. And from that, the conversations really evolved quickly around, what does, you know, what does that mean for our city? So we are now in the process of propping up a new office of equity here in the city. We're doing a citywide equity assessment. And we're hiring, we're in the process of hiring a chief equity officer for the city. And part of the work, you know, for that, for this, for this office, it's gonna be to really inform, informing us and the city manager of how we, we have more equitable access to resources and accountability and decision-making, how we have racial parity within city government when it comes to fairness in hiring, promotion, contracting, and services, you know, access to services by all our residents, doing community engagement processes. And then really, really delineating for us like who benefits and who is burdened by policies and investments that the city currently has and as we move forward. And then creating indicators, you know, to help inform and guide mayor and council at the policy level, but then the city manager internally as far as how the city does business. And the other piece that we were able to move was the, the Commission on Equitable Housing and Development. As y'all know, you know, the Ward One is encompasses the west side, you know, some of downtown and the southwest side of the city. With the revitalization or investment, you know, that's gone on downtown, it's made it a desirable place, you know, an area to live. So we've had, you know, more folks moving into this area. And so the community has again, you know, come to us and ask us like, how are we going to make sure that the, the policies and investments that we're facilitating aren't thinking about gentrification and displacement to this area and that we really kind of take a step back and assess some, you know, like the things that have happened and haven't happened and how we need to move forward? Because we know that we have a crisis right now of people experiencing homelessness. We have, you know, neighborhood, you know, longtime families concerned about cultural preservation. And we have households that are really house cost burdened. And then we have, you know, the, the commission to kind of really keep, keep that in mind and help with vice mayor and council. But then also look at things like the Central Business District and the, and the G-Plat and the latest study by Dr. Paivo on the Equity and Sustainability Assessment on the G-Plat. So that we're just kind of connecting the dots that it's not just housing and then development, but that a lot of these, these issues are, are connected. And we need, we need to, you know, be aware of that and have a critical eye to how we move from that. And then finally, you know, we were really able to challenge ourselves and, and, you know, my colleagues and, and the city manager for the types of community engagement processes that the city has. And so one of the first things that we tried out in the summer as we were talking about the fiscal year was having a budgeting tool within the city. So that I'm not sure if y'all were able to look at that, but it kind of broke down the city's budget from department and, you know, what each of those funds, how they operated. But they gave folks the opportunity, if they had, you know, a dollar to invest, how would they break down that dollar, how it gets used? And so I felt like it was a first step in having an exercise where we're helping educate our community on how the city's budget process works, but also to get some feedback. And so with that, we came back to mayor and council last month to offer a framework for how to do a public and a participatory budgeting process each year. And so I wanted to share this video with y'all about what, what the participatory budgeting process could look like.
All right, if you live in this community and you pay taxes, come out and vote, decide how your tax dollars get spent.
Participatory budgeting gives people real power over real money to make the decisions that affect their lives. It's a democratic process in which ordinary community members directly decide how to spend part of the public budget.
Oh, this is different because you're actually voting for where the money is going to be spent instead of allowing them to decide where to spend the money.
Who knows better about their community than the people that live in their community?
Not be afraid of the big words, participatory budgeting. It sounds boring, but it's the opposite of that.
So how does it work? First, people brainstorm ideas. They come together in meetings and assemblies and start to think of what kinds of projects they would like to see in their neighborhood.
We had to think big. We have a million dollars that we could use. So we can fund parks, health issues, streets.
Volunteers work with experts to turn people's initial ideas into full project proposals.
We started, we made about 40 projects. And so we had a series of budget delegate meetings and we narrowed down the list into about four or five projects.
We met with the Parks Department and we talked about what we wanted to see change in some of the parks and how we were going to work with them.
What are the real needs of the community? If you only have a certain amount of money, what is it that you can do that's going to benefit as many people as possible?
I'm dreaming of new benches, modern benches. Seniors have nowhere to go.
Displays at bus shelters throughout the district. And it'll tell people when their next bus is due to arise.
We're asking for a projector and 30 Mac laptops.
State-of-the-art fitness center.
To put solar panels on a firehouse.
After volunteers share the top projects, the community gets ready to vote.
It's a way of validating every voice in our community and saying, you know what, whatever your position is, you live in our community, you have a right to decide. And that me as a representative and government should respond and should listen to that voice. Anybody could vote in this process, immigrants, whether you're documented or not, young people that normally don't get to vote.
Most people, they don't even know that. Six CEOs could come out here and vote today. Some of them are really surprised. They said, really? I said, yes, they have a voice.
The projects with the most votes get funded.
The Red Hook Library Community Garden, right here.
The projects are then implemented over the next few years. In the following year, the process starts again. People brainstorm new ideas, turn them into new projects, vote on them, and fund more improvements for their community. PB becomes part of the budget process. It becomes a new way of governing.
I think this is like the greatest wave of democracy coming into the United States. It started in Porto Alegre, Brazil in 1989.
From there, it spread all over Latin America to over 1,500 cities around the world. In Toronto, public housing tenants have decided how to spend millions of dollars on improvements to their buildings. City council members in Chicago, New York, and other cities have engaged thousands of residents in allocating discretionary funds. Entire cities have launched PB, such as in Vallejo, California, for funds from a sales tax, and in Boston for youth funds. Even schools and universities have used PB.
This was a great opportunity for you to be a part of government and better the city you live in. Who wouldn't want to take advantage of that?
You're creating a more educated platform of voters overall. So I think this can only be good for the big project of democracy.
All right, so some, and so, you know, the other piece with the community engagement, I'm not sure if any of y'all had the opportunity to sit in the Central Business District community meetings that happened in the month, in the month of January. But again, we pushed the city to have a different process for, for hearing from the community. That was a work in progress because with each session, you know, we learned about how to make it more accessible and really kind of engage folks who either agreed or disagreed or kind of weren't sure about the city's direction on that front. And that we also were able to bring in community bridge builders as, as facilitators that kind of help, help, you know, bring community members along, but also the city that like to bring, to bring some sort of consensus, you know, that we all kind of have our own ideas or viewpoints, but how do we maybe kind of, you know, come together with, with agreements to help bring, bring win-win opportunities? All right, so what, what didn't go so well? I think we can all across the board talk about the impact that the pandemic has had in our lives. I know that for our work because so much of it, you know, was founded on, on co-governing and community engagement and really kind of trying to bring in marginalized voices who are usually left out of the, the governance side of things, that it was, it was difficult to, to connect, you know, with, with our Ward One neighbors. A lot of the activities that we had planned for the year had to get postponed. We also, you know, across the country saw the turmoil around police brutality and accountability. And here, you know, in, in the city of Tucson, I mean, you know, we saw the, you know, we heard of the stories from George Floyd and Breonna Taylor. But then here in the city of Tucson, we also had the, the death, the in custody death of Carlos Adrián Lopérez and Damian Alvarado, and a lot of the protests that happened here around that. And then that even during our, our budget conversations, you know, we, we were, you know, being asked to, to defund the police and, and invest in Black Futures and making sure that the basic needs of people were being met. And so I feel like that conversation, you know, is still not over, that we're going to continue to have the grapple with, with how we move forward on that front. The other thing that was a challenge, and I mean, I think it's a challenge all the way around, but again, related to the pandemic, when there was a new development proposals coming to neighborhoods, it was really difficult to really engage neighbors around the impact or whether they would support it or not, or what they were willing to support and couldn't. It just kind of really fomented real distrust from all sides of how things were trying to move during the pandemic. Because as y'all know, a lot of development hasn't stopped, you know, during the pandemic. But we have seen is that a lot of our, our housing stock just drastically, you know, is drastically low. And y'all see everything that's going on with the, with the housing market at this moment. But that has been a real challenge for us in trying to figure out how, you know, how we have a transparent and public process to talk about any new development happening in, in our area. And then finally, you know, I think we all kind of came in to the office and to the work really starry-eyed about what we could accomplish and how we could work. And that, you know, some of our staff members, it was, you know, it was a lot. It was a lot. And I think I can speak candidly with y'all that just like we know that the work that we're doing is, is meaningful and that, you know, we know that it wasn't going to be rosy and all easy, that it, you know, it is a challenge being in the public eye. And a lot of times just feeling like, you know, just being at the front end of getting a lot of the, just like a lot of the negativity, the, you know, it can be very dehumanizing, you know, to say the least of how people approach us and talk to us. And so we had a couple of staff, you know, transitions decide that this wasn't the work for them. So even right now, we're a little short-staffed and we're trying to figure out, you know, how, how we move forward from that. But that's been, you know, that's been one of the big challenges that we, we dealt with this year. And so some of our goals for, for 2021, and y'all are seeing this before I've even talked to staff about it because I thought it'd be good exercise even for me as I'm talking to them about how we're going to approach the work this year and that from what we learned last year. And because again, we've been just, you know, reacting to a lot of what was coming at us during the pandemic and figuring out how to make it better, that, you know, we still have our own vision and goals for how we want to move forward. And so we need to continue the work of having a plan for affordable and workforce housing in Ward One. We need, we, you know, our goal was to have a neighborhood leadership institute last summer and that had to get postponed. But we really want to engage our neighbors or people that aren't traditionally involved or connected with either their neighborhood association, but, you know, care about their community and just other ways for them to, to connect and, and have access to us. We also are going to move forward with the Worker Cooperative Initiative. I had talked to y'all last time about I had talked to y'all last time about that being one of the items on my platform, just really, you know, boosting that, that as a, as a, you know, democratically governed and owned and operated workforce development here in the city of Tucson. And then really, you know, with the, with the freeway that really like divides us and is a barrier from, you know, our, our district, our ward from the rest of the city, really trying to have a robust bike and walking connections, you know, in, in our ward that make it safe and fun and accessible for all our members of our community to, to enjoy. And I read this quote at my, at the inauguration and it is still how I wake up, you know, doing the work every day. And it's a quote from Angela Davis that says, "You have to act as if it were possible to radically transform the world and you have to do it all the time." That is what, you know, helps, helps keep me grounded and optimistic about what we're doing. So that, that is, that is all for me and I'm looking forward to y'all's questions and reflections back to me.
Wonderful. Thanks very much, Lane. You can close down the sharing on your side. And I encourage everybody in the meeting to ask a question. We have a number of people who have their hands up. The longest was John Yelkom. John, please unmute yourself and ask your question.
Okay. Thank you. Well, just today, just in today's newspaper, there are four letters to the editor about Barnum Hill and the zoo. It's the biggest issue in Tucson. So in Ward One, there's a place that has a half a dozen Barnum Hills. And it's called the El Rio Golf Course. For years, the city has said that El Rio doesn't make money as a golf course. The duck ponds there are all called water hazards, but they're really duck ponds. So the question is, what considerations are being made to make El Rio accessible to the entire community and not just to golfers?
John, that's a great question. And part of the original work that the El Rio Coalition back in the early seventies was fighting for, I, I'm, I mean, I'm there with you on, on that one. So I think it would have to be a community-led effort, you know, to really get folks engaged, but help push for that. And also engage, you know, engage the golfers because I know a lot of the pushback from that has been that, you know, the El Rio Golf Course as it operates now is better.
Why don't you repeat that again, Lane? Your sound dropped off.
Okay. But that the, that the El Rio Golf Course of today is very different of that from the 1970s where it wasn't really accessible, you know, to the barrios, to the neighbors that lived, you know, around it, that now they do a lot of, you know, young development on golfing for young people, especially young people of color. And that it's, you know, it makes it, it makes golfing accessible to different groups of folks. So I think there have to be, you know, a dialogue around that to move, to move in that direction. But I agree, you know, that that would be a great open space for the West Side.
Lane, if I could just follow up on that. The community involvement that you were talking about has been ongoing now for 50 years, like you say, since 1970. And bringing in golfers, when I worked in the Ward One Council Office, Trinidad Lopez was just an avid golfer. And it was part of the community effort to get the golf course named for him. But the truth is, there's a golf course that's just up the road. Silverdale Golf Course is a mile away approximately. So there's lots of golf and there's lots of things made for golf. But there are not enough Barnum Hills in Tucson to satisfy the need of the entire city. So that would be the point of the question that I raised.
We've got a question from Robert Buleczak. Robert, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you for coming. So my question is related to the Tucson Sustainability Plan. I know the city is working on that and the city has worked on various sustainability plans over the years. So my question is really not what is the sustainability plan, but how do we get the city to go from studying the problem to passing policy changes that actually do something about it? You know, there's things we can do by electrifying the fleet, by electrifying buildings. The city's been doing a great job getting solar on the buildings. So, I mean, that's an actual action that the city has taken that has a big impact. But there's a lot more things that the city could do that would just have a big impact if they would implement them. So how do we get from studying the problem to actually changing policy and doing something about it?
Robert, I think that's a great question. And one thing that comes up for me is that like we, we do need to kind of even have a report card for what are the things that, you know, that we've studied and said needed to happen and what things are happening. And then what are the other areas that, you know, we need to keep moving on? I know that like with most things, there's usually other interest parties involved in that the city is, you know, negotiates with them about timelines and timeframes to make things happen. But I will take your, your comment, and I don't know if you gave that to the mayor when she was your guest speaker here at DDT, but she's really been the lead on that front. And so I've been, have been more of a supportive role, but I will definitely share that feedback with her.
Well, there's a great example because we've had a proposal for an ordinance for EV outlets and new construction. We've been working on for a couple of years and I understand the mayor is not putting it on the agenda to finalize it. And we've done all the things that we are supposed to do to get it to the point where the city council is ready to vote on it. But there's been no session called. I mean, I, so I'm taking that as an example of, the word I get back is we want to study it some more. Well, we've been studying it for a couple of years. How about we actually do it? Anyway, that's, I'm, I'm on the Tucson Commission on Climate Energy and Sustainability. So we're just feeling frustrated that this thing we've been working on for a couple of years seems to be stuck in the mayor's office.
Okay, I will, I will ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a question from Miranda Schubert. Miranda, please unmute yourself and ask away.
Thank you. Such a great presentation. It was really cool to like learn a little bit about what the 2021 goals are. I think I even got a little emotional during the participatory budgeting video because I just, I'm really excited about ideas around co-governance and participatory budgeting. I'm interested to learn more from you about like, what are your considerations when you're thinking about gathering more community input for co-governance? Because it seems like a really ambitious undertaking where you want to invite folks to the table who aren't used to sort of being asked for their opinion or invited. So yeah, any, any sort of thoughts you can share about that?
Yeah, thank you, Miranda. I think that's the piece of the participatory budgeting, you know, process that I'm really looking forward to because I do think it is like an entry point for folks who aren't, you know, typically engaged to feel like, like my voice matter and there's an impact and there's a win, you know, connected to it. As we try to bring them into the fold that like a lot of like the long-term policy work and investments is very long-term. But we do, to keep people engaged, we need small wins to, to show that their, the investment that they're putting as far as their time, you know, and their voice, that, that it matters. And so that's why I thought it was important to have that as a, as a starting point. I know that's specific to, to the ward office and the neighborhood association groups. What I find a lot of the times, and since I've been, you know, working in and around the ward office for so long, is that a lot of the times, the folks, you know, that do go to neighborhood association meetings or active, aren't necessarily representative, even demographically, you know, or even, you know, age or, or, you know, just, you know, just the complete makeup in those meetings, but they're the ones making decisions, you know, for their entire neighborhood. And so I really wanted to, you know, help develop a, a leadership institute where we're talking to schools, you know, and the schools, a lot of moms are really involved, you know, with their, with their kids and that's their entry point. And like, how do we go to them and try to recruit them? Or how do we talk to some of the small businesses in the areas and who are the people, you know, that they talk to and, and come in? And then also just even word of mouth, you know, a lot of us have families that, you know, that live in these neighborhoods that aren't connected and how do we bring them along and get them excited that they're also leaders, you know? They might not look the way that they traditionally look. And so for me, that was a starting, you know, a starting place for that. And as far as, you know, at the city level, it can be, you know, really frustrating, I think even with like Zoom, we're able to maybe reach folks who wouldn't traditionally leave their home or their work, you know, to attend a public meeting. And it's more easy for them to hear and say connected. But then, you know, there are these like technology, you know, divides and challenges at the same time. So, but I, I do feel that like at least for like Mayor and Council meetings, that really the streaming and having those accessible has made a difference where folks wouldn't, you know, go to Mayor and Council meetings, but now they can go see clips and, and give us their feedback. So I think we're, you know, we're learning as, as we go and I'm super open to any feedback that you have and how we can do that better.
All right. Thank you. We have a question from Dr. Barbara Warren. Go ahead, Barbara.
Hi. So summer's coming once again, it's coming around again. And in addition to the climate mitigation plan, that's a part of the sustainability plan for the city, there's a climate adaptation component. And the mayor had committed to developing standards or rules or requirements for the city workers, for anybody who's working outside for protection of them from extreme heat exposure. And there's, it's, it's not a hard thing to do, but there needs to be a mandate for all employers to protect their outdoor workers from extreme heat. So I'm wondering how that's coming along. I know that the mayor had committed to putting that, getting that done in the context of the climate adaptation plan, but I'm, I haven't heard anything about anything happening yet.
Barbara, I wouldn't actually, you know, be able to speak on that. I'm not up to date on when that's coming to Mayor and Council. I know that at the last council meeting, we just passed a minimum cooling requirement for rentals because we know that that has been an issue with renters and their landlords not helping keep a level of adequate cooling, you know, within, within households. And so that was one way of addressing that. But as far as the, the protection from extreme, you know, heat exposure for our workers, I'm not sure when that's coming back. And I can make sure to also flag that for the mayor as questions that, that folks have of when that's moving forward.
Great. We'd appreciate a strong nudge in the right direction. Thank you very much.
A question from Paul Stapleton Smith. Paul, go right ahead.
Thank you. And Lane Santa Cruz, thank you for everything that you've done during this, during this insurrection, the pandemic. It's just been an astounding time and we thank you for your service and for your innovation. I have a specific interest, of course, in the Workers Cooperative Initiative, Lane. How can we get engaged and move that forward in a, in a robust and energetic matter? And again, thank you for everything that you do. It's not easy doing what you're doing in these times.
Hey, Paul, thank you. Well, that's what I want to hear because I think sometimes when I do talk about like the worker, you know, cooperative folks, like it seems like such a, like, I don't know, like they don't, they don't know what I mean by that, but I feel like it's such a, like, I think it's all the work that labor has done in practice. And I don't see why we haven't been moving in that direction, you know, citywide. So as we, you know, are, are moving forward on that, I'll make sure that staff is, is reaching out to you so that maybe we have some kind of, you know, informal committee that's, that's putting that together to come before the city.
Steve and Christina Early have a question and they ask if you could describe what is being done for senior housing in Ward One?
In the, the projects that, that were already in place before I kind of came into office, there hasn't been more movement in that. The shortage that has been talked about has been around workforce housing and, and that there is zero of that in Ward One. So that has been the bulk of the, you know, affordable housing conversations. But I can, I will, I will use this as an opportunity to kind of, you know, get more information on where we're at with senior housing.
All right. We're almost out of time and we've gone through all of our questions. Lane, I wonder if you could summarize how we can support you, how we can contact you and what kind of help you need from Democrats of Greater Tucson right now?
Mary, that is such a thoughtful question and I really appreciate that, you know, being on this side of governing can get a little lonely and you feel a little disconnected, especially during the pandemic, that you don't get a lot of affirmation from the folks around you. So I think to, you know, the platforms that do exist right now, that you can continue to reach out to, to our office or even to Mayor and Council on the issues that are coming up, that impact on all of us, like we talked about, you know, the, the issue with, with the zoo expansion coming up and making sure that we're hearing, you know, from everybody on, on that front as we're talking about the needs around, around housing, like what, what are y'all seeing? What are the needs, you know, for the families and the households that y'all represent? And then even some of one of the things that I didn't really get to touch on, but that I was like, this is how I want to approach the work, you know? How do we just bring, you know, joy and creativity to the work? So any, any suggestions of how y'all want to see that? Please, please let me know. And you can reach, you know, reach me in my city email for like citybusiness@lane.santacruz.tucsonaz.gov. If it's non-city business, you can email me personally and that's lane.santacruz@gmail.com.
Lane, thank you very much for coming to our program today. We were grateful to hear about Ward One and all of the things you've done and all the plans that you have. I'm hoping that everybody will return next week. We have Anne Chanica. She's the Deputy Director for the Tucson Housing and Community Development. So with that, I'm going to end the meeting and wish you all a terrific day. Thanks for coming to Democrats of Greater Tucson.